I will call the meeting to order at 10:03. I have a couple of comments to make at the beginning, and they are going to be, we've got a lot of ground to cover, most of which is what you have in your hands, but a couple of things to keep in mind. As it says in the literature, you have, these meetings are meant for discussion purposes, and they are not about the closing of this school. The school is a vibrant and functioning unit, as Dana has pointed out, and we want to make sure everybody understands that. What we're looking at here is what happens to us in three to five years as Act 73 comes into play. So that's why we're sort of getting, trying to get a sense of the community of where we would like to be in some time, and how we would like to petition the state to try to meet our needs, rather than just place us in whatever they feel is best for us. But I just want to mention a couple of things about the school, if I may. One of our teachers, Pam Mail, is getting recognized as a Teacher of the Year in Burlington sometime coming up soon.
Very well deserved, yes, at the end of October.
Yeah, and that's, and I also heard the other day that someone has graciously donated two 3D printers to the school. Linda, Don, and Sierra, the new science teacher, are working to get them functioning. So look for new, who knows, chairs, microphones, whatever. I don't know. All kinds of cool stuff. Let's see. At the first meeting, we handed out a handout that had four options that we were asking people to look at and consider. And in the intervening time, with Act 73 moving so fast, we realized that option number one, for those of you who remember it, and option number four simply weren't viable. Not only they weren't viable from a perspective of, will the state ever permit us to do them, but they also weren't viable from a perspective of, how do we best educate our kids here? So we've narrowed the options that we're looking at down to just the two that you have on your sheets.
Do you want to say what option one and four were?
Yeah, so option number one was to just stay just the way we are with no changes, and remain a small independent district. Well, you know, that was clearly not the intent of Act 73, and we weren't sure that it best addressed our needs anyway. Option number four was to become a non-operating district and just basically let our kids go wherever they chose to go. And I also don't think that the state, I think that might have been a good, you know, option for our students here, but I don't think the state was going to permit it either. So that, those were one and four, just non-viable. And so part of the reason for that is that the Act 73 and the redistricting task force has been working in the meantime, and they've sort of narrowed down their focus, or broadened their focus, rather. But also, we got a lot of help from our superintendent, Bob Tebow, who was able to look at some of these options and say, you know what, it ain't going to happen anyway, so why even, you know, keep it in the discussion, keep it in the mix? So our goal through these meetings is to reach out to the broader community, and we will be, after today, sending out a survey, and it's just going to be an email survey. It'll be on Front Porch Forum, Facebook, we'll try to get something at the town office. We're going to ask as many people as have access to the survey and feel like they would like to submit something. We don't have the wordage of the survey yet, but it'll, as you can see, there are only two options at this point. We're going to kind of say, from what you know, do you feel like option A is preferable for the, from your perspective, or option B? Should be as simple as that. And we're going to include the three emails of the three school board members, and ask people just to respond to one of the three of us, and then we will, between us, keep track of what people send in and make a spreadsheet, and then use that information to approach the state task force. At the first meeting, we tried to keep a list of the questions that people asked, and we'll do the same today. And then we will make that information available. If we have answers to any of those questions, we will make that, we will make that available. One of the biggest questions that came up at the first meeting was, what about transportation? You know, whether we continue to operate or don't operate a school, we're part of a larger district or part of a larger SU, how are our kids going to get where they're going to go? And we do have some answers to that, and I think that Andrea has embedded them in the sheet that you have there, which is really good, because, you know, that seemed to be one that was on a lot of people's minds. We have some sense of where transportation might come from and go, metaphorically speaking. And so that is included in here. So one of the biggest questions, maybe we have answers to. Some people had asked things like, well, you know, how much is it going to cost to keep the building here if we're not operating a school? What's the burden on the taxpayers going to be? We've got some estimates on that, but we'll get that information out there. I have to say many, many thanks to Linda and Don, who have offered to facilitate. They've also done their best to try to keep this school board on task and focused, not always successfully, but through no fault of their own. But anyway, thank you for that. Thanks to our superintendent, Bob Pebo, and our state representative, Emily Long, for being part of the conversation, for taking their Sunday mornings to come, Saturday mornings, come here, thank you. To Dana for the same thing, coming here. To Rachel and Andrea, I want a special shout out to Andrea, because she took what was not particularly cohesive document just a couple of days ago, and made it into what you have in front of you. There's a lot of good information in there, and well-stated, et cetera. Do other school board members have anything you want to add, public comments, before we get started?
No, I want to reiterate the thanks to everybody, because everyone here has played an important role, and you all for being here and contributing. Thank you.
I mean, I guess, I just want to make clear that we're not going to send out a survey to everybody in town. It sounds, it was maybe not, so it will, the question of the A or the B will be stated again, and be available for you to read on Front Porch Forum, and, you know, Facebook, and posted at the town offices, and then if you wish to respond, you just respond to us directly, saying, I really think option A, and you can tell us why, if you want or not. Just in terms of the timing for us figuring out what the needs of the town, the desires of the town are, and getting it back to the task force, the whole idea, even if we used Survey Monkey, it was going to take too long to do it that way. So it's a little bit more on you, if you care, but we're there at the end of our emails, so.
And to be clear, this is not a vote. This is not like a town vote. This is just a gathering of public opinion. So, and the reason for the survey is that, you know, we did these two meetings, one Thursday night and one Saturday morning, so that everybody could participate, hoping that if you couldn't make one, you could make the other. The reason for the survey is that there's always going to be someone who can't make either, and we want that person's voice to be heard, too. So if you, you know, if you're in the town, if your, if your kids attend the school, we want to hear from you and what you think is the better option of the two. Yeah?
Just, I would find it helpful to know what is the timeframe that we have to give feedback, and why there's not a vote, why it's not going to.
Okay. So this is not a vote because it's not binding. What we're doing at the end of this is sending a letter to the state, saying, this is what our people kind of want, and they're, they're going to do what they're going to do regardless.
It's not really in our, we can give feedback, but it's not in our.
We're giving feedback to them, and they're going to make a decision. They're going to present three options, and it's not going to be, you know, we're not going, we don't really have a say in what happens, as far as like the broader picture goes. So this is more our way of saying, this is what Marlboro would like, and the state, you know, will hopefully look at that and respect it, and they may look at it and say, well, this doesn't fit in with any of our plans, so we're going to do this instead. So it's not a vote, and you know, there's some things that could potentially become a vote in March, if somebody wanted to make a petition and put it on the ballot. But so that's why this is not like an official vote. And also, the timeline just really didn't allow, the task force, they're going to be presenting early December, so we wanted to have something to them by the end of this month. And so ultimately, the timeline is, what, two weeks from now, I would say? Or a week and a half to two weeks? So people could just make comments, you know, within the next week ideally, and we'll put a deadline on the thing that goes out. I think we're going to try to have something out posted by Monday or Tuesday, early this week.
Right. Does the lecturer have a question, and then your question online? Sir, in the second row, you had a question? You had a question? No? Okay. So Nellie Sart, Nellie, online.
Sartine, yep. Hi, Nellie.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, thank you so much for all your work to the school board. I have, I'm wondering if we could have access to the document that people who are present have access to?
Yes, ma'am, if you, let's see. Can you see it on the screen? I'm doing a screen share, can you see that?
Yes.
Yes, so I'll be doing a screen share, and if, I will put my email in the chat to all of you that are online, and you can email me, and I can email you, so that I have your email address, and then I can email you the attachment. Okay?
Yes, thanks for thinking.
I did want, I do think that it's part of our plan, although we have yet to meet and finalize our plan. I do think that there will be an email sent out from Dana to the school community, is that correct, with this?
And I'll also, I'll put it on the website, so that anybody can access it.
So we'll try as much as we can to get the word out there, and hope that people will respond to it. Without further ado, then, I'd like to turn it over to Don Furman, who's going to facilitate the discussion, and this is, this is, you know, Don, do you want to talk about the two options a little bit, or just open it up for conversation?
Well, I was, the last meeting, I actually read the options, but since I'm not that familiar with it, Andrea, would you mind reading?
Sure.
Option A, and then when we switch to option B, we'll read that.
Okay.
And then direct your questions. If you want, raise your hand, and we'll try to get you in the order that the hands go up. And for the most part, direct your questions to the school board. If they're legislative questions, then Emily may weigh in, or not.
I'd be weighing in.
But we'll try to have the questions come to the school board. Okay? So, go ahead.
So I'll start with option A. I just wanted to mention first that the second page of the document is everything in words, for those that are verbal, and for those that are more visual, the third page has everything in a chart comparing them side by side. So basically, the two major options are, the first is to merge with a nearby district, and the second is to keep Marlboro as its own district, remain in our current SU, or merge with a different SU. So if we were to merge with a nearby district, likely candidates would be Wyndham Southeast Supervisory District, which is Brattleboro, or the River Valley District, which is Dover-Wardsboro. There could also be a new district created by Act 73 that would include something else. We would disband, the school board would disman, but we would gain a seat or seats, depending on proportional population to whatever district we are a part of. Elementary choice, if Marlboro School remains open, kids in other towns in the district, so if we, for example, merge with Brattleboro, kids in Dummerston could come here, or kids at Academy might be able to tuition here. Marlboro students would have a choice of schools within the district, noting that if it's not your home school, that school principals have the final say in where students attend. High school choice, if we merged with Brattleboro, all students would attend BUHS. If we merged with Dover-Wardsboro, we'd have high school choice. And the asterisk there is just to mention that the recent changes to the law means that choice is not what it used to be. It's not that you could go to any school. There's a very specific list of schools that qualify for tuitioning in. They're mostly public schools, and then a traditional, a few of the traditional academies, like Burnburn and Thetford. There's others on the list, but the list is like 10 schools long or something, it's not very long. Transportation would be the responsibility of the new district to provide. If we merged with Brattleboro, we would likely have transportation to Brattleboro. And if we merged with Dover-Wardsboro, we would be responsible for figuring out transportation, but again, that would be part of the merging documents when we join the district. And then sharing of assets and costs, so, you know, assets, the building, the buses, et cetera. Assets would be shared with the district, they would be part of that broader district, and then costs, such as the building maintenance, would also be shared. And, you know, building upgrades and bringing everything into compliance would be spread across the district. And then, on the long term, who would decide if we merged another district, if the population declined enough, who would decide if Marlboro School gets to remain open or not? Initially, that would be negotiated during the new district's formation documents, the Articles of Agreement, but future decisions would be made by the larger board, which we would have proportional representation on.
Okay, thank you. Question?
Have we guaranteed at least one seat?
Oh, can you state your name?
Paul Butler.
Paul Butler?
Yes. That's correct, I would guarantee one seat.
Yeah.
So if we were with Brattleboro, we'd probably have just one seat.
Yes, sir. I'm Paul Butler. Either of these districts that have to approve are merging with them, correct?
Correct.
I know that when the district merger with Dover-Wardsboro was discussed a few years ago, we all, they had to take us, or we all agreed to merge together, but I didn't know if they could veto it or something like that.
Potentially, they could. I think Dan had already.
Wouldn't that be up to the task force?
Yeah, that would be up to the task.
Well, a couple of different, it could go a couple of different ways, and maybe we'll ask you, Bob, the same question, but certainly, as it is now, in order for districts to merge, they, they all have to agree. It has to be a marriage. The redistricting task force has enough authority under Act 73 to just make it happen. So depending on, depending, yeah.
Can I just actually correct that?
Because the redistricting task force only has the ability to make recommendations to the legislature. The legislature is the one that has the authority to make the decisions based on, you know, feedback from the redistricting task force.
Yes.
Tess Lindsay, kind of on the same, the same vibe as that, like, has there been any conversations already with Brattleboro, River Valley about merging, and what kind of feedback have they given you?
I'll happily answer that. The Wyndham Central Supervisory Union has created a subcommittee for exactly that purpose, to reach out. I have personally met with people from Wyndham Southeast School District, which is the school district that we were talking about, and I've also met with people from Wyndham Southwest, the Twin Valleys schools there. Those are brief, personal conversations among people who are exploring options. So we haven't, you know, nothing's been decided at this point, but I think everybody recognizes that there's a real advantage to being proactive about this, rather than just, you know, saying to the task force, recommend whatever you want to the legislature, that the task force, in fact, I happened to be in Waterbury the other day, someone came, two supervisory unions and one school district came with a document saying, we have worked together, we would like to be considered as a unit, as you're looking at how to redistrict, and people on the task force, our Wyndham County Senators, Wendy Harrison, in fact, was the one who said, this is great stuff. She said, as long as we're looking at how to redistrict around the state, if people come to us with their own ideas, then that gives us some guidance and takes the, takes the, you know, sort of anxiety off of their plate, so.
So positive conversations, but no, nobody has said like, yeah, we're definitely in, or if, there's not been any kind of like, these are still kind of like potentials.
Yeah.
Yeah, there hasn't been any.
But it is something that the Wyndham Supervisory Union's board is working on, but things happen slowly, unfortunately, with the speed with which Act 73 is taking place. You know, our conversations need to, need to boost up a little bit here.
Yeah, Lake Louise?
Carol Furtaba. Could you, I hope, briefly talk about the different districts and supervisory unions, and how that, how the different structures work, and getting a little bit of.
Actually, I was thinking, why don't we, if everybody's okay with it, let's get Andrea to read option B, because that, that sort of answers your question, I think, Carol. If people have specific questions about A, we can always come back to it, but it's the difference between the two that I think we're concentrating on.
Well, did we have?
Paul Butler.
Paul, you had a question? Yeah, I had a follow-up question. Dan had mentioned, it's Paul Butler. Dan McCarter had mentioned that there are real advantages to being proactive with this process. What's been opaque to me until today is how these different options position us, and what you just touched on. I think that because it's likely that under Act 73, mergers into larger districts could occur, I'm trying to get my mind around strategically what puts Marlboro at the greatest advantage in that process, and the different pros and cons, and what is likely to happen. I think under Act 73, it may be the districts are not consolidated, but I think we should also plan for the worst-case scenario. I'm not saying it's the worst case. For the more extreme scenario, say there are five districts for the whole state, how do these options add to or reduce Marlboro's strategic position as we move through that process? So it's kind of, you know, I'm touching on what you just said, Dan, but also, it'd be great to flesh that out a little more. People have ideas on, you know, what the, what strategy's likely to be, because the districts that are suggested here, then themselves are likely to become part of bigger districts.
Well, I think, Paul, I think if it's okay, let's, let's go through option B, because I think, I think that's really what we're getting at, is, does this community in general feel that a district is preferable, or a supervisory union is preferable?
Okay.
And, and part of that is, what's best for our kids? I think the majority of that is what's best for our kids. Secondarily, is what is going to work with Act 73. But I would like to think that our conversations mostly center around the education of our kids, and not about how to, to deal with the state. But if everybody's okay with it, let's just go through option B.
I have a specific.
Jacob, and then Adrian. Jacob Smith, Turnpike Road. My question's about the transportation bullet. Is there some particular information about why Dover-Wardsboro would be on us to figure out transportation? Is that like information you have from them, or is there some insight?
I'll probably take that. So when that district merged, they have two different transportation plans. So Wardsboro contracts with a private provider to get students to Wardsboro School, and Dover, who already own their own buses, uses those buses to get kids to Dover. So logic.
It doesn't have the same infrastructure.
Right, so logic would dictate that if you had added another district to that conglomeration, that you'd have to figure that out, and Dover doesn't have, while they own buses, they don't own, they have one driver. So it's like the same challenges that we run into here with the number of drivers, but I think.
You're just carrying the logic forward.
Yeah, yeah, the buses would become the property of the larger district, and then you have to figure out how to make the routes work and all that.
And we could always sell the buses and hire bus drivers, you know.
I just didn't know if that was like from a conversation with them specifically, or you're just proposing based upon.
It's just knowing how they're structured, yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, so, want to read option B, and then?
Adrian.
Adrian?
Yeah, I have a specific question, but I would love feedback from anyone up at the table, or anyone, about option A. If you will see here, I'm president of the Marlboro School Association, which has for 32 years been, it's a nonprofit, and we have raised money that basically provide the income from which provides enriched education to students at MES. So I'm, the MSA is obviously concerned about option A and the bullet item, sharing of assets and costs. Under option A, it's, I would appreciate any feedback to know whether that endowment, which this year is providing $30,000 to increase the education of students at Patnour, would be at risk of being taken by a larger district as an asset of the school. We will be having a board meeting about this on Monday to discuss this some more, but again, I would appreciate any, any feedback from the panel about if we chose option A, what, what that might mean to our existence and the money that we've been raising from people in this town for 32 years.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. It sounds to me, I don't know how the structure, but you guys have your own accounts, you have, you, it's a separate.
Totally separate 501(c)(3) here. However, it is pretty tied currently to the school, to the, this school, this specific school.
Sure, yeah. But it wouldn't, I don't think you have to worry about the assets being taken by a larger district, because the assets aren't part of the Marlboro School District. It's a separate entity as far as the assets go. How you would move forward distributing funds to one school within a larger district, that I think would be more of a political question for you guys, but financially, I would, my sense would be that you would maintain your own finances as part of that, because it's not part of the school district.
Right, that's true. On the other hand, in terms of how it's structured currently, and we will probably have to discuss changing this, including changing our mission to some degree, because as currently structured, if the Marlboro Elementary School is shut down, it's not really clear what we, what our mission would be in those circumstances. So I'm just mentioning it as an issue and a concern for the MSA.
Okay. Andrea?
Option B. So option B is the other major choice, which is to keep Marlboro School as a distinct district, the Marlboro School District. We would remain in our current SU or merge into a different SU nearby. Some likely candidates are the Brattleboro Supervisory Union, which is Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union, or a newer SU containing our current one, merged with others. So it could be Wyndham Southeast plus Brattleboro. It could be like the first map they showed, which has all of Wyndham County. The Marlboro School Board would maintain our local school board and all decision-making abilities. Elementary choice would be similar to the way it is now. Kids in other districts would not readily tuition in if open. Marlboro kids would attend MES if something down the road, population decreased enough that Marlboro closed, then Marlboro kids would have regional elementary choice similar to what is offered at Stratton. So for example, Stratton students are part of Wyndham Central, but can attend any school they choose, if that has capacity. High school choice, an individual student could choose to attend any school within the region on the acceptable school list. So again, that's subject to the new state law. Stratton students, for example, are part of Wyndham Central, but can attend any school they choose. So it's the same as what we have now. Transportation would be the responsibility of the Marlboro District to provide. If we were to close as our own district, Marlboro could choose to use our existing buses to take students to their respective schools. Sharing of assets and costs, the assets would remain under Marlboro control, and all costs would remain Marlboro's responsibility, unless there's some kind of change that's in Act 73 change that changes that. And then who would decide if Marlboro remains open? The decision would be in the hands of the Marlboro School Board and the town, potential to become full choice for all grades if enrollment dropped too low.
Okay.
And again, it's tricky to talk about this without really knowing what Act 73 is going to do. So so much of this is tentative, and I think that makes it, it's just a really hard conversation to give great answers to.
Okay, first of all, does that answer your question about the difference between districts and?
So under option A, if we merged with a district, then that district, say it was Brattleboro, is that still controlled by a supervisory union? I just, I'm not really sure how the district and the supervisory unions.
Yeah, so currently, and this could change with Act 73, but currently, you have either supervisory unions or supervisory districts in the state.
Okay, that's confusing.
I know. A supervisory district, there's fewer of them. Springfield is a supervisory district. There's one town, one district, and it is its own entity, okay? A lot of places, particularly rural places, have supervisory unions, which are a collection of smaller districts, and that's where we are here, right? And while though some of those smaller districts merged with Act 46, so there's fewer of them now, they're still the SUs that govern how those districts operate. So really, the difference is like a school board, a district has a board, and you operate independently, and you're part, you may be part, or you will likely be part of a giant SU, but if you're, if you're in a district with a bunch of other towns, you have a shared board, and you have shared responsibility. So that's kind of the main difference. Now, when, when the task force brings maps to the state, and the legislature eventually makes some decisions. Now, when, when the task force brings maps to the state and the legislature eventually makes some decisions, that could change. There could only be school districts. They might be really big geographically. There may be supervisory unions that have districts still spread out around the state. I guess part of the essence of what the board is asking for input on is, do you guys want to remain a district and keep SUs as an option? Or do you guys, are you guys okay becoming part of a larger district? That's the essence really of the question. And the chart kind of lays out some of those differences and how they impact you guys directly.
Okay, yes?
Two things. One.
Could you state your name?
Catherine Rhodes of the Von Ames Hill. If we're part of a larger supervisory union, sometimes there's benefits to that in that there's more things that can be offered and more things that can be shared. You know, in Brattleboro, you know, it includes Guilford and Dummerston and Putney and Vernon, sort of. I'm not really sure how that works, but anyway. But like, for instance, the special ed support services are shared with all of those schools, not just with Brattleboro. I'm also, because taxes are due on the 10th, I'm also interested to know whether there's any information yet at all, maybe not, because no final decisions have been made yet, but of the tax impact of option A and option B. It's, you know, we're, we're all seeing every, throughout the state, we're all seeing the taxes go up and it's really having an impact on many people. And so trying to figure out a way to not necessarily have taxes plummet, but you know, to get them a little bit more under control. And if everything remained under our control and was solely, or not solely, but mostly our responsibility and we wouldn't have cost sharing, I'm sort of guessing maybe that that might not help, you know, level or reduce our taxes, whereas if we're cost sharing, it might. But then again, you know, I think there are other factors that I'm probably unaware of and again, no, no final decisions have been made. But does anybody have any information that might, like, yes?
Yeah, so two things. Act 73 also is looking at changing the funding formula completely to what they call a foundation. So every school district, every student would get a certain amount of money. And then you could figure out what to do with that money. It's probable, I guess, we can ask Emily this, that they're going to factor into that foundation formula for smaller, more rural towns, the sparsity, the population and the rurality. They've got factors that they've been able to assign to those. My guess is that the foundation formula would assign more money to a student from one of those regions, but it's going to be the same tax impact. The town can then vote on top of that foundation formula to spend more money if they want to, but that's all on their own dime. So I think most people I've been talking with have just been saying, once the foundation formula comes in, we're not going to, you know, the idea is just to spend what the state has said is your, your, your foundation amount. But I will say this too, I was just looking to see if I can find it. A chart came out recently showing the average per pupil costs within districts and average per pupil costs of, let's see, average per pupil costs within combined districts such as the, the one in Brattleboro, which is the Wyndham Southeast Supervisory, Wyndham Southeast School District is a school district consisting of those towns that you mentioned. Expenses per pupil within school district, combined school districts and within independent districts within supervisory unions. And independent districts within supervisory unions spend last year a little bit less money per pupil than combined school districts. It's not a drastic amount. I'll see if I can get the chart here, but there's, you know, last year, there was a little bit of savings associated with it. So maybe Emily, you want to, I don't know if you followed the foundation formula at all, but am I accurate on that or please correct me if I'm.
You are accurate on that. It's important that people understand that that foundation formula, which is a part of Act 73 that passed. It does allow for waiting of students and you mentioned some of those waits, you know, students who are in need of special services and other things and sparsity is part of this, although that's still being defined. But, but a dollar amount will come in. I have been saying and have said it throughout the whole process of the drafting of Act, what turned out to be Act 73, that governance change needs to come first if we're going to change our foundation, our, our funding formula into this foundation formula. So that's all mixed in as part of Act 73 and so it has passed. And you were accurate on what you were stating. There will be different amounts.
So what is the timeline for enacting the various pieces of Act 73 relative to the tax question?
So the whole.
When would the impact on taxes?
Law doesn't become fully implemented until FY '29, I think is what we said, so 2028. That's when the whole thing comes, but I, I, I just need to stress, I say this because that's what the law says, but so much needs to be decided still, including the, the first step, which is the December 1st report from the redistricting, redistricting task force, which, Dan, thank you for going to those meetings pretty regularly and staying on top of it because I think it's really important that, that school districts do do that and give their input like your community is doing. But, but the outcome of that is going to drive next steps for sure in the legislature. And they can only make recommendations, as I said before. And the legislature can reject anything, they say, or take, or modify or take what they have recommended.
So we wouldn't expect to see any impact on our local taxes until 2028?
Well, I mean, I can't say what, what the impact will be on your, your personal, your local taxes here beyond what we can ever predict. But, but the impacts from the law won't be on, based on your, won't hit your taxes until it's fully implemented. Yeah, just a little bit of that. It's, it's, it's very complicated, honestly.
Sounds tough.
Yeah, and I, I'll just say one more thing because I think it's really important. The driving factor behind Act 73, from my perspective and the perspective of many of us in the legislature, was the pushback we'd been hearing for a number of years on the increase in property tax rates in the state of Vermont. Understandable, we were all open to trying to find a path forward in the legislature to reduce the impact that we're spending on schools on property tax rates. This law has, there is no guarantee in this law, in my opinion, that this will actually at this time reduce property tax rates. And that's a serious concern for me. And I'm going to continue to stay focused on that as we move forward because not only do I worry that it's not going to reduce property tax rates, I'm concerned that it could even increase them based on some of the feedback we're getting so far. So stay tuned is all I can say because there's a lot still to be decided.
If I may, sorry. I don't believe that we've addressed Catherine's question, which is can you please assess the relative impact of the two options on our local property taxes? Do we expect, all else being equal, one option to raise our property taxes or one option to lower the taxes? So I believe that was Catherine's original question.
I believe Dan was saying that when he saw it was negligible, the difference between a small district and a supervisory union or being part of a larger district was not that great. So I guess the answer would be no.
It might not make a difference.
It might not make a huge difference.
But it, but that's also statewide averages and what would happen exactly in Marlboro is, is really difficult to know. I, I would say, you know, as you point out, within our supervisory union, all the special ed services are provided by the special, by the supervisory union, which is good. All the financial services are provided by the supervisory union, also good. But we have to pay them to do that too. So there's an economy of scale, but, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't come down to zero by a long shot.
But the larger the, the sharing pool, if you will, the more even the expenses are. You know what I mean? If you have one student who moves into a small town that is a very expensive student because of special ed placement, that one small town doesn't feel the impact of that because it's, it's kept level based on the sharing with the other towns.
Dan, that's sort of what I was.
Yeah, so I mean, and I think the bigger the entity you're part of, the more level it would be. That would be my take on it, but doesn't give you a hard answer, but I mean, I think it does level things up.
Well, I think that's a helpful piece of information in terms of understanding the difference between a supervisory union and a, and a school district as well, so.
I'd like to make another comment about Act 73 while Emily sort of was talking about it. I'm also a member of the Vermont School Board Association and they had an annual meeting or they had a statewide meeting the other day. Two representatives from the redistricting task force came to that meeting, Edie Granning and Martine Gulick. And they said to the entire VSBA participants, which is about 100 people zooming in, neither one of them had voted for Act 73 and they both felt that the timelines were completely unmanageable. And yet they both had stood up for the task, so to speak, to say, this has got, this has got to be done. I'm willing to be appointed as a member of the task force to try to figure this out. But it made me feel good that there are legislators on the task force who recognize the impossibility of what they're trying to do. So, you know, just a side comment.
I just need to say they're, they're co-chairs, the people who came.
Yeah, that's right.
Co-chairs, and they're both legislators.
Yeah.
Okay, Paul?
It's Paul Butler again. I, I think it's great to talk about expenses and also great to talk about what's best for our kids. Many years ago, I served in town government for many years and I was on the board of blisters among my other roles for 11 years. And at that time, at that time, property taxes were much more important, or a very important component of revenue, but also allocated individually within towns. So blisters and treasurers are very focused generally on grant lists and tax rates and things like that. And one of the attractions of the proposal several years ago to merge with Dover and Wardsville, although it gives up our school board and we'd have seats on a larger board. In Wardsville and especially in Dover, their capacity to raise revenue from their tax base is greater just because of the presence of second homes and, and commercial real estate related to Mount Snow area. I'm not saying taxes are low in Dover now because the people there think that, you know, why did we even put up with this ski area because our taxes have gone way up? But I'm saying that in terms of what's best for our kids, and this may totally change as Act 73 is rolled out, but the capacity to raise revenue from the grant list of the combined three towns, and this will be with option A, would be greater than what we have in our town where we have primarily residential real estate. I don't know, you know, how that comes out, but my kind of overall agenda here would be, because we're facing a great deal of change and we're facing a lot of uncertainty, it's important to model what we have and what we might have in the future. And part of modeling is just looking at everything that can be measured, you know, like enrollment and decline in enrollment and test scores and things. But another thing you can measure is the ability of towns to raise revenue from their tax basis.
Do you have a question? Or are you just?
My, my question is, I guess my question is, and Emily touched on this, we don't really know what's going to happen with property taxes, but they're still going to be a large component, however it is that they're distributed. And so I think that relying for the property tax component of the revenue on the town of Marlboro specifically, I'm just making a statement, I guess, is less beneficial for our kids than having a greater power to raise revenue from our tax base, which may be the case with the larger district and that may be erased if we went to a mega district.
Okay.
Lady in the front row, then we have a question online and then Adrian.
And also Emily had a question.
Emily had a question.
Oh.
Actually, it's really important that we understand that, that there's a statewide education funding system. So while I hear what you're saying about merging with a town that has greater grant list and tax capacity, all of, even in current funding and in future funding, there will be a statewide, the, the money goes into the state, gets pooled out because of Act 60 and 68 years ago to make the education system more equitable for every town and every student. So I just think it's really important to keep that in mind.
Okay.
Jess White, Suite 9. I guess the two things that really stand out to me is that in both cases, there's this line, if MES remains open, which I'd love to understand what that means and what circumstances would decide that. I know that's not what we're doing here today, but that's such a big word, those are big words. And then the other one is the sharing of assets. Because we know that for a number of years, the buildings had significant issues. And just trying to understand how that's being held in this whole conversation. I know that we don't necessarily want to make like a huge future decision based on like just temporary issues, but that is like a significant issue for our town's schools. So I guess just anything that can be said about those two.
I can just briefly mention, the student population at MES is currently 57. 17 of those students are in 7th and 8th grade. So in two years, the population of MES is going to be like 42 because there's only one or two upcoming kindergarten and pre-K kids in town that we're aware of. There could be, maybe a family with 10 kids moves in, who knows? So the likelihood is that in two years, we're going to be looking, and this is an enrollment cliff that's happening nationwide. It's hit Vermont harder, a little harder than the rest of the nation. And so I think just practically, we're looking at some kind of either downsizing or merger to make it a viable situation. And it's not that we're talking about the closing now, but we do need to be looking because this is coming down the pipeline in two years. We do need to start having this conversation about what we're going to do as a town.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah.
And, and the decrease in class sizes is with us, all right?
Okay. Online, we have a question from Susan and Woody. Susan and Woody, would you unmute my, your mic? There you go.
Sure. Hi, it's Susan Kuhnhardt here. So on that note, I thought Act 73 had requirements of class size minimum. And how could Marlboro stay open with only 42 students in if that wouldn't be the 10 per classroom? So I'm just curious how that comes into this picture. Thank you.
Well, it absolutely does. I mean, that's, that's a part of the conversation. And again, we don't know if the act is going to change at all to accommodate smaller schools, but I think right now we need to assume that it's not and plan for that. And so, you know, the, the reason we had been talking about option A was that there is this idea that kids could potentially tuition in. You know, say they're going to a school that's a, a bigger school, maybe they tuition into Marlboro as part of the same district, so it's not really like a tuition, it's just a sharing. And so some people might want the smaller school and some people might want the bigger school as an effort to see if that would work. You know, if we, if we remain option B, there, there is a real chance that the, the school is too small and we have to become a full-choice district like Stratton. But again, it would be choice to another.
There is potential for a waiver on rural small schools because of the location and accessibility.
The state board is developing the rules, but they have yet to be developed. So we don't know what those look like.
So it's an unknown.
Correct.
As, as much of this, unfortunately. I mean, as you start having the conversation early and there's a lot you don't know, so, but you still have to try.
And when we talk about what's in the best interest of our kids.
And when we talk about what's in the best interest of our kids, what, where's our line in terms of, right now, we have a vibrant, beautiful school, full of amazing teachers and students who are thriving. At what point does that diminish with not having enough kids?
Adrian, you have a question?
Adrian, sit here. So I'm interested in a topic that I think is important, which has, which is on here, but I'd like to just emphasize a rule. And it is, and it is a long-term topic. It's in some way, it has long-term implications. And it's about our town maintaining local control, how our kids are educated, the kids that live here. And option A, with the district, the supervisory district, we lose a lot, possibly all of that control, because our school board gets disbanded, and we have a seat of two, depending on what we end up in, in a much larger board that basically makes decisions. And we can say whatever we like on that board and be overruled. If we stay in some kind of supervisory union, we maintain an open school board, which means that local people have some say, have say as much as possible over what happens on education in the future. I'm thinking, for example, I mean, it's very possible, from what we've heard today, that MES may have to close in the future for a while. But then I'm thinking about a further future when, for some reason, being optimistic, people move to school, kids come here. What would be our situation then if it became viable in principle for us to have a local school, which I think a lot of us, which we've had, you know, certainly since I've lived here, I don't know, we've always had a school that had local, a local school board that decided what happened at the school and the kind of education that our children had. How likely is it that if we are part of a supervisory district where we have minority representation and people in this town think, you would like to have a school again, how likely is it that the district, a district might say, maybe they would. Maybe they would say, no, we don't want to do that. Your kids can keep being bussed over to somewhere else. And so I, and so I guess my question to the board is, is, you know, response, how do they feel about that, that situation? Am I, am I, am I giving a reasonable, possible future or other aspects I haven't considered, or not considered there that would change some of my perspective on the future and desirability of being part of the supervisory union or the supervisory district?
Right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, just for clarification, if the school closed, and we were part of a supervisory union, but we were tuitioning our kids, we would not have any say, because we would have a board, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't be having any control over the kind of education those students are having, because we would not have anybody on the boards of any of those schools that they might go to, Brattleboro, Oak Grove, Wilmington. So for that perhaps hunk of time, we would have much less say about the type of education our children are receiving. Now, in that scenario, there is also the possibility, as you say, that maybe the school would open again as its own district within supervisory union, but we don't know.
No, we don't know.
So I guess I'm just saying that the, saying that they, we would have more say over our children's education in option B, because we maintain a school board, is, in my mind, not exactly true, because the children would be going to many different schools. And maybe that's what the town wants, to be able to send your kid either down to Brattleboro or over to Wilmington. And that's why we're having these meetings. But as a board, we would not have any say about where the children go or what happens at those schools. Whereas we would have a small say if we became part of a larger district. We would have at least one person on that board. Would we have much sway? Dan is a very persuasive person.
Well, just to follow up on that, Adrian, I think it's the perfect question that you're asking. We will be asking the broader community to weigh in on this, you know. We might have opinions as board members, but we feel it's, it would be an important thing. People with as much information as possible, given the chaotic nature of Act 73, basically say, we like to think that in 20 years, there will be enough kids to reopen the school, and we'd like to then have that capability guaranteed. Or we feel that the representation in the schools during that 20-year period, you know, it's all so subjective. And so everybody, I think, will look at it differently and, you know, yea or nay kind of thing.
Yeah, I certainly agree with you that if our school is closed, you know, then during the time that it's closed, the school board that we have, you know, doesn't really have much to do. But again, we have, we keep, this is long-term thinking in terms of the future of this town, we keep open the option of one day, that school board saying, we want to build a school here, it makes sense now. And to me, it seems much less likely that a supervisory district will ever come to that conclusion. It's rare for new schools to be created. It's not impossible. It's like in New Hampshire right now, there's one example down in New Hampshire, but it's very unlikely. So I think, the way I see it is that moving to a supervisory district, makes it much less like, it's a long-term decision that's going to have long-term cost pressures for the future control of education in this town.
Emily's got a question.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that people really understand what the new education funding formula that is in Act 73 actually does. And that is, you will not be voting specifically on the dollars spent. The money will come to you from, right now, you decide what you want to spend, and you send that up to the state. We decide how much is going to, how much revenue we need to raise to provide that education. But you're making the decision locally on what you want to spend. This is not going to happen anymore. So you won't be voting on that. What you will on your board be able to decide, if you have a local board or a broader board, how you spend the dollars that are sent to you. But you don't get to say, actually, I want to add this new program, and we're going to raise the revenue to do that. That's not, that's not the option that is coming forward from you. There will be an option built in, they're still working on the formula of it, but to raise a supplemental amount of money, which is a 10%, which actually declines to 5% over a number of years, beyond what you're given in the foundation formula, which is a weighted dollar amount, a dollar amount that is then weighted per pupil. But the idea of local control, because you brought up the question about local control when you first started that, it's a different animal than it is today. Just want you to be very clear and understand.
I just want to clarify, I thought that local control would improve the possibility of reopening the school in town in the future.
If you have a board and the state has allowed that to happen. Again, it's many future decisions to be made.
So can I just, can I really briefly?
We've got a line of four people waiting.
Sorry, I just wanted just not to get anybody's hopes up. This is the chart of the live births in the nation over the years. And Vermont, actually, where there's this uptick, Vermont had the least births of any state in the nation in 2025, 2024. Sorry, because it's one year lag. So just to, we can talk about the potential future, but we should keep in mind that the birth rate looks like this, and Vermont is more like, there's not this uptick in Vermont. So this is nationwide. So just, just to look at this with realistic eyes as much as possible.
Okay. Carol?
I actually think my questions have been answered by the questions, like Jill having the green sweatshirt and the glasses.
Hi, Doug Corb, South Road. Not MBS, it's up the boards.
Come on, Doug.
I'm glad to be brief. Two sort of questions to you. These aren't, these aren't really options. These are your choices for us to recommend to you, right?
That's correct.
So I still, and I guess this question is for Bob and for Emily mainly. What happens to the non-operating districts, sort of piggybacking what Adrian said? Because if I'm on board and I'm making a five-year plan, and I'm seeing enrollment for something that's not going to happen until 2029, and there's 40 students, and there's four years, we're losing 10 students a year, why are we, and we'll be down to zero, you know, I just don't understand the plan and why we aren't suggesting, hey, why can't we keep local control, become non-operating in four years from now? What's happening to Wardsville, Bob and Emily? What's happening to Wyndham? What's happening to those districts? Are they being forced to then take on the taxpayers' dollars from Brattleboro? Are they going to merge them in? Or are they taking over control?
So, I mean, so Dan started the conversation by saying what they're hoping to do is send the light to the task force, right? With making an argument around what Marlboro wants. Stratton, you mentioned Stratton, has already done so. Their request to the task force was not about districts or SUs, they just said, look, if you're going to create an entity, push us towards the Manchester side of the entity, because that's where our kids go. And that was their only request. If Southern Vermont was all one SU, it wouldn't matter, right? For them, they'd be in the same SU. But right now, because they're on the mountains, they want to just get pushed away. Wyndham has not made a claim yet, a request yet to the task force. They are, they obviously struggled with enrollment and had to close the school. And so I think, I mean, I think it varies on how these different entities are going to deal with it. I don't know if you've weighed in on the West River side of things or not as a board member of that entity, but there's no, West River has also not made any, has not made any statements to the task force either. I think one of the challenges that I see, just politically in this, is that when you merge, when Dover and Wardsville merge, they're, you know, they're not exactly the same size, right? But they're part of the Articles of Agreement where it's to keep the boards equal representation, so it's three of each members, so that the towns are equally represented. Because anything that's likely to be created in Wyndham County is going to be Brattleboro heavy, right? Let's face it, that's the population. I mean, a little bit in Wilmington, but Bell's Falls, you have Brattleboro. That's, that's what's challenging about it. West River is, I mean, there's differences in population in that district, but they're all small, you know? So I think the struggle of what your, what your representation will be, you're either, you're either maintaining control, total local control, or an existing school, or in Stratton's situation, as she pointed out, no control over what's happening in your buildings because you're sending your kids elsewhere, or you're part of a blended, larger entity where you're, because you guys are small, particularly Marlboro comparatively to Brattleboro, less control. So like, it is what you, what you're pointing out is really kind of that tipping point of, you might have total control as a separate district, but you total control of what if the, if the school doesn't exist? So that's, that's sort of the challenge.
What I just mean, legally, we could still vote tomorrow to become a non-operating district like Stratton.
Correct.
And let all the state stuff play out.
Yep.
And be that for however long we wish. And so I'm just wondering why it's not on here as an option to suggest.
That's a petition that a voter could get enough signatures on and put on the ballot.
But you guys don't want to hear that feedback from people? Or?
Well, that was just. That would be a ballot that issue. We would vote on that in March. So.
I think that the board wrestled with, so if you were here for the first night.
Yeah.
The closing of the school.
Also, sorry, I couldn't be here as an E C.
Well, no, no, the people who were here that night, it was a little bit more convoluted, I think, in how we were talking about it, because some of the options had keep it open, keep it or close it, and it just got confusing. So what we tried to do this time is to really separate out, the purpose of the conversation is to get feedback to the task force. And that's really about SD or SU, right? Whether Marlboro stays open or closed is a separate issue, which is not related really to the task force. It's a problem that this community's faced with right now and will continue to get worse, as we talked about. But it's not, it's not really part of that initial piece. Clearly, you want to think about it because the implications are weighing in.
And actually, that's why the bullet point of who decides if MES remains open is on the list, because if we want that decision to remain in our town, then you would want option B. If you would rather that decision be made by some other board, then you would want option A. Option A has the potential for kids to tuition in, and then the population decline becomes less of an issue. So it's, in that way, if you're, if you're hoping that's.
It's a calculated risk.
It's a calculated risk. If you're hoping that people will want to tuition into Marlboro and keep the school open, you choose option A. If you're wanting to close and keep local control and potentially get it back again sometime, you would choose option B.
Well, then choosing, you could.
Well, you would, I'm saying, you would, you would tell us that.
Tell us that.
And so that's, you know, we're going to the state with this right now. And, you know, yeah, ultimately, this is a conversation we're going to be having, but we had to focus the meeting on the task force.
Okay, Catherine?
Sadly, I will reiterate that Vermont has an aging population, and we're not doing enough to attract younger people and families. So unfortunately, I think that is going to continue to be the trend, at least for a while. But my other question is about the school building itself. I know that there have been lots of issues with the school that have been deferred over the years. And I don't, it would be nice to know kind of what the current status of the structure, the building is, and what anticipated costs are going to be for keeping the school as a school, and what needs to go into the building in order to keep it open or as a school. I think that's another factor we should be considering, because I know that at one point, you know, we were thinking of moving the school because this building needed so much work and was not in compliance. So where are we at with that? Because that's another, another piece of the puzzle.
So Catherine, I had actually written down here, bring up school construction aid, if it didn't come up, but it has come up now. So that is part of Act 73. There's probably to be implemented after everything else, would be some way to come up with the billions of dollars that are going to be needed for all the schools in Vermont. Essentially, everyone needs something. Our school is sound at this point. As far as I know, the roof's not actually leaking. Septic tank is not actually backing up. It's a well-functioning school, but it's not handicapped accessible. It has VCBs in the, in the earlier classrooms that Malcolm and I went to, and Rachel went to, as you can probably tell. So it needs tons of work, but it's not the only one. But that's going to have to be a statewide thing. I don't think that any, no matter how large a district or supervisory union you came up with, you wouldn't share the resources. We don't have them to fix all of the buildings. So just something about construction aid, Emily.
Yeah, I'll just quickly say that that was part of my deep concerns about Act 73 and why I voted against it. There is a program that has been developed that was legislation, draft legislation prior to that, but that we folded into this law. And, and we have a, an entity that will be able to do that. There's no funding for it. There's no funding even set up for it. Originally, when the bill left the House, when we put that part into it, we said that under that supplemental spending, there's, I'm not going to go into the formula and how it all works, but, but there, to meet primum, the constitutional law primum requirement, there, the excess, the way you pool that supplemental spending, it has to be put into a larger pool, because it all generates different amounts of money. And then the excess beyond that would have been ceded into the school construction aid program as it left the House. When it left the House and went to the Senate and went to the Committee of Conference, that got taken out, and that money would be, will now go back into the education fund to lower property tax rates. Now, I think both are valuable, but my idea of putting the money into a seed, seeding a fund to start building the money we need to put into school construction aid that is desperately needed in this state has gone away. And I'm very worried about that. So just putting that out there. But there is a program in place, and it's a good one. And there's been a lot of work done. It's $6 billion to this meeting.
Okay.
Maybe with the meeting.
600 billion.
600. Six hundred.
I'm actually not on a little cap pot forty. There's a chance that my question may be too short for this discussion, and so just let me know. I have a three-year-old, she'll be ready for kindergarten in two years. And I'm pretty flexible about, like, a lot of pieces of her education. I'd like her to have a teacher that she's with for most of the day and at least a couple of classmates. I think a lot of families probably agree with me. And I'm just wondering, like, do any of these options, like, make that possible or cut off that opportunity without a family, like, arranging, paying for it themselves? I guess, like, a lot of this seems more abstract than this question.
Well, I just feel like your question is related to Doug's in that you are thinking about the immediate future. And we, we are dealing with Act 73, which is, what did you say, 28?
Yeah.
And so I'm, I'm not trying to invalidate either of those questions, but those are ones that we're not addressing here and could certainly be addressed by a ballot issue, a ballot item in the spring, a question of, do we keep the school open? Because have we already hit that point where the education is not as vibrant as it is now? So they are very important questions, but not the ones that Act 73 is dealing with. And so when to question, is, is three kindergarteners too small? Is five too small? Is one, you know, those are the ones that we can spend the rest of this year talking about in question of what's going to happen in the next two years to the children in this building. Does that answer your question?
So Paul Butler?
I think so. Yeah, I'm really just wondering if starting to explore one side or the other might, like, open up opportunities for families who, like, didn't want their kid to be the only kindergarten partner.
So I think if option A, if we do merge, and the sooner we merge, you, we would then have some kind of agreement with the other schools, and we would have those class sizes. And I think under option B, unless more people move to Marlborough, as long as Marlborough's school stayed open, there wouldn't be the class sizes. But then there's the potential to explore Marlborough's school closing and being a full tuition town, in which case you could tuition to any school. So, so under both options, there's the potential, but further action would need to be taken in the near term to make those happen.
Okay, we've only got a few minutes left, maybe two or three questions. Green hat?
Paul, again, in the short term, how many two-year-olds, how many three-year-olds, how many four-year-olds are there in town? I mean, that was, and her question, planning, what's going to happen in our planning, short term? And do we know that? And don't we need, don't need to say it today, but do we have those numbers, or can we get them?
We may have some of those numbers, but it's not always, if somebody moves, if somebody's child isn't born in town and moves in and hasn't registered, like, with the school yet, we don't know about those people. But if somebody's child was born in town, we know the birth rate for the town. And I can look that up for you within the next five minutes.
Yeah, we have those numbers. It's just not scientific, because how do you, it's, it's exactly what she's saying. So we've been keeping a spreadsheet to look at that, and that's part of the concern about the class sizes in the younger grades, for sure.
And every time a, a small child shows up, there's a great round of cheering that goes out.
It's true.
Honestly, you guys in that show, you're men, really? It's almost like that, excited about kids.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Paul?
I had a quick question about Act 73. The, the last time, oh, it's Paul Butler. The last time there was a wave of district mergers, there was a provision in the proposed agreement that Marlborough voted on that this school cannot be closed without a vote in the town. Like, any future actions were up to the school board. But in Act 73, would any decision to close schools be made by mega district board? Or was, would there still be a vote in the town? I, I didn't, I, I deducted to the, the legislation, so I don't know.
Good, good, Anya. I will, I just want to say, I'm not necessarily directly addressing that, and maybe Emily can, but those, some Articles of Agreement have worked out well, ones that were carefully crafted amongst merging districts, and some have not worked out so well, among ones who just said, "Well, we'll take the template and, and use that as our article." So whether there even will be Articles of Agreement, I don't know. But, but if there are, they really need to be thought very carefully, thought through very carefully.
And I actually have an answer to that question about the number of kids. We've got two that we know of that will be in kindergarten in '27, two that we know of in kindergarten in '28, and three in kindergarten in 2029. So we've got an average of two kid, two to three kids per grade in the next cohort coming up.
Okay. Adrian?
Adrian Seager, hopefully this will be quick. Andrew, you mentioned about the possibility of, of other, of areas, towns, tuitioning in kids into Marlborough if we stay a supervisory district. I'm wondering what, we have, we have historical data about that? How's that happened in the last few years?
I think it's not technically tuitioning in. I think it's more like, if you're in the Brattleboro district, you can attend any of those schools. So it's, you share the money anyway, and then kids could come here. So they would just be able to.
In the past, I mean, do we have any examples of that?
The Brattleboro district, where they can do that.
And what are the numbers like, happening in the last few years?
I mean, kids just go where they go.
With space, where space.
I'm talking, you're talking about tuitioning into Marlborough Elementary School.
Yeah. It's not exactly tuitioning in. It's more that we're in the same district, and you can attend any school in the district. So it's similar to the model of Brattleboro. It's not that Marlborough, because we share funds, it's not that Marlborough would be getting tuition dollars to operate our school.
Now, I understand that, I'm asking, how many kids have come to, attended Marlborough Elementary School?
From Brattleboro to Marlborough. In the past, Adrian, it has been only the older students.
Right.
So the junior high have been.
I'm interested in numbers, you know, how severe that is.
And it was a handful.
Well, it's also completely different. They're not really analogous, because before, for a student to come here, the, they had to actually give us money. And if we were part of a larger combined district, then they wouldn't have to give us money. The, I think a more important question is, right now, and I'm going to put Bob on the spot, if we were to say, "Well, we'll become part of the Wyndham Southeast School District," would that district choose to try to keep this building open and have some of its students come here?
I have no idea to answer that question. But, but, yeah, just to emphasize the point, though, if, if you're part of a bigger district, if students in Brattleboro or any of those other towns wanted the experience that Marlborough provided, whatever that was, they would be able to flow here based on space, and you've got plenty of that right now. If you're in, if you're in option B, that, that doesn't happen really at all. There have been examples, but it's, it's pretty hard.
Okay. Yes?
Will Brooke DeBach, just following up on that, because if I'm understanding correctly, Putney, Dumerson, and those towns are in a district, right? So do we have any data on how many students go from a, from the bigger place to the smaller place, right?
I don't, but I know, anecdotally, I know what happens, because my kids go to Dumerson, and they've had Bam's kids from the middle school go. She's had two kids join her class, she's in eighth grade right now, in the last two years, from Bam's. That's all I got for anecdotally. I, I could get that information maybe from, from that S U.
It could be interesting.
It could be interesting.
Sometimes it has to do with transportation from where parents work, just simply that.
Yeah, I do know that in, in the West River District, Towns and New Fane Brookline people kind of do move. And even in River Valleys, Warsburg and Dover do move, and that one is even harder to get between. But there are families, several per year, that are Dover residents that go to Warsburg, vice versa. So in those districts, it does happen.
Jacob?
Thank you. First of all, super educational and really appreciate it. It feels like with Act 73, we have, we can have feelings and get more educated about it. There's very little we can do about it. That's just the nature of how the process is working. But it begs to me the question, like many others are asking, is like, what is the situation of our town? How are things that impact our schools, such as population, housing, all those kinds of issues feed directly into our options? And so my question is, is the school board working in any way with other town bodies? For instance, our strategic plan for the town seems very relevant here around issues like college closing, around housing availability, around population. And so, not to redirect to Act 73, but there's only so much we can do here. Is, is there work that you guys are planning that would kind of draw a larger circle with those issues?
Well, right now, we are an independent school board and will be until something else happens. Either we choose to actively seek different or Act 73 comes along. So the question about this school and what happens, what we do here, is, is really a different conversation. It's going to be a harder conversation than this one in some ways, because as you point out, this is a little bit subjective. Do you choose this? Do you choose that? None of which.
How do you feel about it, really, if there's no choice?
Yeah, how do you feel? How we decide what happens with this school is going to be a more, much more difficult conversation. And, you know, we've already begun to have it with the, with the administration, but we haven't progressed very far, and I think rightly so, because so many people's lives are going to be impacted by what happens.
So it just seems like our energies here might need to be distributed somewhat towards the things we can do, things about, so that we can be in a better position both to have options, but also to act with some confidence about this, you know, very rocky, very sort of top-down situation.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Jess?
Yes?
I guess I'm just wondering, as you, like, synthesize all this information, like, you're sending out, you know, option A, option B, and people responding to you, what would you say is the school board's top priority in making your recommendation?
We actually asked the lawyer about that, and he said, "You, you, you are better not to opine on that." You know, on this option A or option B. He said, "If you do, then a survey is less valid." If, if the school board said, you know, vote A, vote B. So this is, like Jacob said, it's just a, it's a question of feeling. What do we feel like here? And I don't want to say it doesn't make any difference, because I really think that just the fact of having these conversations is terrific. And as, as everybody has said, thank you all for participating in it. It ain't easy, but, but we don't want to, to try to guide it one way or the other. And, and also to, to be really clear, when it comes to the conversation about what happens with the school in the next year or two, the school board will be guiding that one. That will be our decision to make.
Can I also sort of follow up on what you were saying, which is, there, you, you are essentially right, the law passed. But in the law, there are so many decisions that still need to be made. And the legislature makes changes to laws all the time. We, we just do that. Why I'm here is not just because the school board, Dan invited me to come to help participate in this, but I want to hear from you as well, because I do sit on the education committee. I am going to have a voice in our next steps, and I want to know how the people I represent feel. And that's why I'm here. I'd be here sitting in the back of the room if I weren't sitting at the top of the table for the same reason. It is, it is incumbent upon you, and I really applaud the school board for taking this step to be able to share Marlborough community's thoughts with the redistricting task force. I think that's really important, that's one step. And then the other step is, when I go back in January, we're going to be faced with a heck of a lot of decisions that still need to be made about Act 73. So everything you're sharing with your school board and with your administration and with me will help me as I'm trying to make sure that the, my goal, and I will say what my goal is, is to make sure our students' needs are being met equitably across the board in this state. And I'm going to keep fighting for what our kids need, and also that our communities have a voice in what that student need being met is. So I, I, you know, I'm just going to keep doing that and hoping that we come out on the other side with something better.
And Emily, I want to just follow up, that the school board's mission is to put the students first. And so that's all our desire, too. And I guess a big part of the asking for opinions is because when we look at these two choices, it's not, it's not 100% clear to us what's the best for the students. And I think asking the community and asking parents and asking, you know, involved and concerned parties is really the best way to gauge that, because I think everyone's going to have an idea of what they think is really effective and really the best way to serve the students of our town. So that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, one more question.
Another question, Emily, thank you for that. The one thing that you did say in the beginning of this about the overall sort of equity and the costs and things like that, I do want you to hear that that is very important to me, because I think that if this whole Act 73 thing is actually not going to sort of like address those issues, then I'm just really concerned, right? And we're doing a lot of stuff around governance, around, around things that are, are going to sort of like not have mattered and make things worse, you know? So just want you to hear that, correct?
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a few minutes left. Do we have any closing thoughts?
If anybody here in the room has not signed in, please come sign in. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, any closing thoughts?
No, just to thank you all for coming, because it's a complicated process we went through. And your questions have really helped us to clarify what's important.
Yeah, and I just want to say, like, these are all bigger issues that we don't have immediate answers to. And the one thing you can do now is support our school that is here and running, and our kids deserve, deserve a community that, that holds them up. And so let's keep holding our kids up for as long as we can here.
Okay. All right. Any more?
I will, I will seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thank you everybody so much for participating.